Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. Today is Tuesday, March 12th. I'm having this meeting ordered. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 26, 2019 regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or amendments?
Yes.
Lisa.
I just spoke with Whitney about this a moment ago, but if you look at page three of seven, item 4.5, under the description for the curriculum committee meeting, it appears that the description doesn't really match up very well with what was actually said, and I know because I said it, but I didn't say that. So Whitney's gonna investigate, but ultimately, I think that the description should probably be that Lisa Rosenthal referred the members of the committee to the minutes, and there were no questions.
Perfect. All right.
That's easy.
Sure. Any other questions or amendments? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Whoopsie. That's everyone except Jaclyn, who's attending. We now have an opportunity for public comment. Would any member of the public like to comment? No? Seeing none? All right. We have a presentation by Boses.
So I'd like to introduce Sherri Wesley. Matt, you tag came in this with Sherri, or moral support?
Yeah.
Okay. Take your way, Sherri.
Great. Thanks for having us. I'm sorry, we have a corner. So we really do appreciate the opportunity to come and give you an update on our basic budget. We really do appreciate you inviting us and having us when we were working on the capital project, and I'll talk just a tiny bit about that at the end. But this is the ongoing bread and butter of the Boses budget that we want to talk about a little bit today. And so far, so good. Boses trustees, as you, I think, know as well. But one of the things we want to make sure you realize is that Boses, in a sense, works for you. We really listen to what the districts need, and we are constantly evolving and offering new programs and new services. And over the last year, for example, we had four additional classrooms to serve students with disabilities that opened. Last year, there was a lot of interest and excitement in a behavioral specialist, and we were able to get that position onboard now. And we've expanded our course offerings. We've started offering a dance program at Salt Point Center, which is really a great way of reaching some children who otherwise would not be communicable. And we've also been expanding our animal plant science program. We have a new greenhouse that's under construction and are really doing a lot of exciting things in that area. We've, over the last couple of years, been putting a lot of effort into the professional development side of our organization. Not only do we teach youngsters K through 12, we do a lot of professional development, i.e. adult learning and adult education as well, really helping keep all of the standards at the forefront of people's minds and really improving the quality of the delivery of service. We've started a new data service this year with a new employee that's also really taken off. This year will be the second year we've had the Honor Student Recognition Breakfast, which was something that grew kind of organically out of conversations with the superintendents around the table, so that last year was really quite wonderful, and we're expecting it to be wonderful again this year. And we've also really stepped up in terms of our advocacy, really promoting education, really promoting education in Dutchess County to our state officials, local officials, and even nationally. Well, Matt thinks he's watching, but...
I don't know.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Like you, we are facing challenges and opportunities. I don't think there's anything on that list that is a surprise. The whole county is seeing enrollment shifts, declines movement. Funding is an issue that none of us are happy about these days, comfortable with. Health insurance, particularly in our case for retirees, is a huge financial issue, and I'll talk a bit more about that a little bit later. And we're also in a position of having difficulty recruiting and hiring really good staff. So that's, I don't think anything on that list is a surprise to you, but they are things that we really need to work through and work with.
Can you speak to that a little bit? What's the core of the issue there?
I could give you a snippy answer. Finding people is hard. Sometimes we find people, and they do a really good job, and people take them from us. That's my snippy answer. But the serious answer is there really are not a lot of particularly administrative people, people who are skilled at working with some of the populations we serve, because, you know, we do serve difficult students, and the pool to juice strongly is not a lot very deep.
Okay.
You couldn't ask your name?
Steve.
Steve, would you mind? Steve thought he was just coming to. With challenge comes opportunity. As you know, we've got phenomenal opportunities ahead in terms of a capital project and what that means in terms of our students and your students, and what we're able to offer and what we're able to provide for the community. We have challenges in terms of security, again, really making sure that our students have a safe environment in which to learn, and how to do all of this innovation on just a little shoestring. So, programs require funding. They require money. They require monitoring. And a Boses budget is a little bit different from a district budget. It's actually three different kinds of budgets all put together. There is an administrative budget, and in April, all of the 13 components are asked to vote on the administrative budget for Dutchess Boses. We also have capital and rental budgets, and then we have a slew of different program budgets. So there are actually three different pockets. You vote on one, well, you vote on them in different ways. You vote on the programs by what you choose to sign up for, but in terms of an actual board vote, it is on the administrative budget. And I think you've probably heard me say, but I will say again, Boses is also different from a district in that we have no fund ballots, which can be a little frightening in terms of budgeting, but from your point of view, it's a good thing, because at the end of the year, if a particular service had more revenue than expenses, that money comes back to the districts that participate. So you always get the return of the surplus. So this is the part that you will be asked to vote on, and it is showing a 1.99% increase, which is something the Boses board is very concerned with. We don't tax, and so therefore, we don't have a levy, and therefore, the tax cap really doesn't apply to a Boses, but our Board of Trustees is extremely conscious that it does apply to you, and really forcing us to keep our increases in line with what's happening in the districts. So within the administrative budget, there's what we're calling administrative operating rating, which is just everyday what it takes to run the overall organization, which is slated to rise 2.19%. There is the huge retiree health insurance cost, which is slated to rise almost 14%. And then we have some offsets that we are actually increasing this year. We have a retiree health insurance accrual. We also have, for the first time, some interest income that is worth mentioning, has it been for a while? And we have some fees that we get when districts outside of Dutchess take our services, so we are applying some of those fees to bring it down to a 1.99. I do want to just take a moment and talk about the retiree health insurance. We are required to account for the retiree health insurance costs within the administrative budget. When a teacher, for example, is working, say, I don't know, a carpentry instructor, the health insurance for that person is picked up by the co-serve or by the service. Their insurance is part of the tuition that the districts pay. But when that person retires, the cost of their health insurance is shifted to the administrative budget. So the administrative budget is required to account for it, but over time, it becomes a really increasing part of the admin budget, and I'll show you that a little bit more in a minute. This is, you know, the meat and potatoes, the active part, as you would expect, salaries, equipment, operations, really nothing extraordinary happening from year to year. Some things, you know, might look like a big percentage, supplies looks like a lot of change, but $2,800 is really not a lot of change. And now we get to the impact of the retiree insurance. Because it is presented within the administrative budget, it actually counts for 69% of the administrative budget. I also, I think it's kind of ironic that it's a contingency item, so if for some reason the Boses budget goes down, that huge square, the 69%, still is in effect. We've been taking some measures to try to control it. The last couple contracts we've had with two of our big units have extended the period of time that employee needs to work from 10 to 15 years before they are eligible for retiree health insurance. So that'll help, but it won't help immediately. We've also been able to increase the percentages that employees contribute, again, which is helping, but there are a variety of things that hopefully will all come together and make that a number that we can adjust to and live with, but it is going to keep growing. So it's a huge part of the administrative budget. We have no choice, but if we did have a choice, and we chose to show it as a percentage of all of the Boses budgets, then it gets down to 7%. So that's not quite as overwhelming, but, so we think it's helpful to kind of show And if we were to show just what portion Rhinebeck pays of it, it gets much smaller. So I think there's three different ways to look at it, the first being what's required, but then a couple other things to give a little more context. So that's all the admin budget. The second of the three is the capital and rental, and this is our ongoing capital and rental budget. It includes, at this point, the space we rent on Route 44, not for much longer, but for the moment. It also includes some classrooms that we rent in districts around the county, and money that we transfer annually just for basic capital projects, roofs. We've got an HVAC project going on, you know, not the mammoth projects, but the things that we need to keep going. The administrative budget and the capital and rental budgets are allocated among the 13 Dutchess County districts on basis of ARWADA. And ARWADA is one of those SED words that stands for Resident Rated Average Daily Attendance. It is an enrollment-like figure that we get from SED, so I need to emphasize it's nothing that Boses creates, but it gives you a relative sense of the enrollment throughout the county. And we've highlighted Rhinebeck so that you see you are approximately 2.72% of the ARWADA for the whole county. And that number becomes important because that 2.72% gets applied to administrative expenses, retiree health insurance expenses, and capital rental expenses. So if you follow that across, that becomes the amount that Rhinebeck will be billed for 2019, '20. And you are showing an increase of $5,000. So the third of the sections are the program budgets, and there are scores of different program budgets. Each district decides what it needs, what's going to help you fulfill your own strategic goals, and they change from year to year. Some of the things I mentioned in the first couple slides are things that have come up as a result of evolving needs among the districts. So each year, each district decides what it needs to purchase from Boses. And once again, if you're participating in a service and there is revenue at the end of the year, you get to share it. The converse is if there's a deficit, you get to share that too, but we fortunately don't have that happen. Yes, thank you, Steve. This is kind of a sense of all of the Boses budgets together. So you see the administrative part at the top being the relatively small part of the overall, and as you would expect, special education, career and technical education, some of those alternative education are large parts of the overall. We added a little as of February 28th because this pie is evolving. You know, just in the last week or so, we know that we've gotten another almost $4 million worth of related services requests. So that number will keep changing up until May, and final service requests are due May 1st in the Boses office. In this, I do need to read, because I do want to give you a sense of what's going on in terms of your specific students. And Rhinebeck right now has students in our Career and Technical Center studying construction trades, cosmetology, culinary arts, nursing assistant, small engine technology, trade electric, TV and video production, and also welding. So there are 19 students from Rhinebeck in our Career and Technical Center. You also have students in special education areas, including itinerant services in our Salt Point Center, our high school beta site, and also in one of the PCE programs in district. And you've also been participating in our summer school, in arts and education, school improvement technology, school library, subcalling a number of those other things that Boses does behind the scenes to really keep all of our educators moving. This is, again, a snapshot. We spoke about the surplus a couple times. Most Boses services also generate aid, and in the third column is the amount of aid that would have been generated by last year's services, for a total of 571,000 of both surplus and Boses aid that finds its way back to the district. And the final of the charts is just to acknowledge that, we recognize that the major capital project is in addition to what we've talked about before, and there is going to be a three-year spike in your Boses payments. There is going to be a 20-year savings, there's going to be a whole lot more on the plus side, but we don't, we want you to know, we do acknowledge that there is a spike for those three years coming up. And a couple key dates. We have our annual meeting in conjunction with the Spring Expo at CTI on April 6th. It's a Saturday, it's kind of a fun day. We have a lot of students running around showing off what they do. We have like an amazing race opportunity, so it's fun. And our culinary students provide a really lovely lunch, so if you'd like to come get a little taste of what the culinary students do, that would be wonderful. We have April 23rd, all of the Boards of Education vote on the same day on the vote on the budget, and May 1st would be the last day to let us know what specific services you are buying for next year, if we need to do hiring, or if we need to do some shifting of personnel. We do need that much time. And again, the final slide is just to remind you that Boses doesn't have any schools. Without you, you know, there is no Boses. There are students from the districts that come and get a part of their education from us, so it's really important that you recognize that we are sharing students. So with that, I am open for questions, and I thank my...
Does anybody have any questions, comments? As usual, a very thorough presentation.
Yes. Thank you. You know where we are.
Joe?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Sherri and Matt for being here. In my time here in Rhinebeck, Boses hasn't always come out to the component districts to do a presentation on your budget, and I'm saying that as a criticism so much as an acknowledgement that I think the outreach that Boses has been doing is appreciated. I think it gives our board and whatever other boards may be wise enough to invite you to speak to them the information they need to pass their vote as a board on April 23rd, I think it is, or whatever. That's our regular meeting that Tuesday night, so we'll be here. I just don't want to thank it for granted, that's why I mentioned it, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we are skipping item 5.2.
We are.
Okay. For a later date.
I'll reschedule for the 26th of March, so...
Oh, sorry. Okay. So, principal reports. Who gets to go first? Couldn't get them to switch it up.
No.
A little hazy.
So, a few things happening at Chance, and this is more of, my first time is more of a district-wide, but I just wanted to kind of follow up. As you know, I had mentioned in my last report that we were doing our Health and Wellness Parent Academy in February. We did it on focusing on school avoidance and emotional regulation, and, you know, one of the things I wanted to do in a public forum, one, we, you know, we always would love to fill that room, and certainly we're going to move forward to trying to think about next steps, what we could do with that, the messaging in that PD for primarily parents. The Health and Wellness team did sit down, and we were just talking about maybe possibly ways of getting that type of information out to students as well, the things that are, you know, kind of teaching them what's happening there when there's school avoidance and things, and hopefully to help them work through that. But I also wanted to just thank Nick Montenay and Meg Rodier for making themselves available that night. They came, you know, voluntarily, certainly important information they wanted to see, but also just so we had people from building representation that if questions had come up. There wasn't anything necessarily needed to answer, but it was just nice to have them both there in the event we needed to, and like I said, looking for next steps as far as finding ways to share some of that info with students. I had mentioned, and we were able to do it this morning, we had Slapstick Science come for our school, our school assembly, K through 5 today, and it was, he worked on, much work with little effort, and it focused on simple machines, pulleys, screws, et cetera, things like that, and it was just wonderful, kind of an hour of physics, made it a lot of fun. Small, little teeny, itty-bitty, tiny, little burst explosion, but completely controlled, but to actually show energy out of control, but within a controlled environment. But it was great, the kids loved it. He pulled me into both presentations, so I got to do some feats of strength and things like that, using pulleys. I also wanted to mention, I know I had talked about us planning it, we had our first three days in February, and then the next three days in March start of tomorrow, and that's our model schools work with CLS staff. They're focusing on, in February, they focused on a kind of a writer's workshop 101 for each grade, K through 5, so they were able to meet with each grade and the special ed teachers that supported them for half-days over the course of three days to talk about writer's workshop and the structure and everything that goes into it. And then one of the things I'm the most proud of, and I really wanted to commend my staff because this is something that's kind of a new direction, and they're kind of working at their comfort level and really trying something new, in those meetings in February, before Audrey Wood left from Boses Model Schools, she actually planned with each individual grade the next step for when she comes again, starting tomorrow for the second set, which was supposed to be taking theory and then putting it into practice. So she's actually going to be working with teachers, many of which are actually doing the demo lesson for her and their colleagues, and then having time to process. Fifth grade's going to be breaking up and working on conferencing and conferring with students, but I really wanted to commend my staff. It's something we've been able to do in slow drips and drabs throughout the building, but this looks like all sixth grades have really thrown their hat in the ring and trying something new. One of the toughest things is doing a lesson in front of your colleagues who work and do the same work you do, so I wanted to commend them because it's really quite amazing. Many of them jumped at the opportunity to give it a shot and see what happened, so I'll be able to report back on that next time. I wanted to take a moment just to thank ENTIA and RSF for supporting a program now with kindergarten. They're working around living and non-living things, and it's directly connected to the kindergarten integrated unit on living and non-living things. So the ENTIA artists are going to spend one hour per day with each class for a total of seven hours, hopefully getting to all three classes in a day, and they're going to be working on certain parts of that unit with them, focusing on embodying your animal and understanding its habits, the performing arts part. The visual arts part, we'll be talking about visualizing their animal and their environments, and the hope is that each class will create an oversized book that they'll be able to put together and collaboratively work and publish. So we're very excited about that work, and I wanted to thank certainly ENTIA and RSF for helping to make that happen. Our, I want to say, third year in a row, we began our annual Harry Potter unit. As you know, you guys have supported that early on with the specials teams working together and creating a character ed unit that's really collaborative across all of their disciplines. So this, we started on Friday. We had our assembly, our sorting assembly, where they get sorted by houses, and the grades three, four, and five will spend the next five weeks working on things like integrity, responsibility, respect, and above all, collaboration. So they'll be working on that for the next five weeks, so very excited about that. And this year, again, I wanted to thank the RSF for helping us make this happen, a very quick turnaround. The new addition this year involves a unit, and in the unit involves bringing Hudson Highlands Nature Center for a Harry Potter themed animal presentation on the 28th, and they're bringing things like owls and some things that show up in the movie. So that's a new addition. In addition to them dragging me into it, so I am now the voice of the sorting hat offstage, so the kids can't see me, and then I actually step out in full Dumbledore garb. Kind of dug it, full beard and the whole thing.
Excuse me, I haven't seen a picture yet.
Yeah, why haven't we even tweeted about this?
And when I mentioned it to Joe, that was the first... And luckily, the gown, I guess, is long enough, yeah, sure, long enough to cover my crocs, so the kids will be tight. We're working, as you know, you guys had approved actually several teachers to work with a group of students on the environmental program, the early school, early morning enrichment. As you may know, next month, our second meeting in April, when we're doing principal reports, we'll have a group of those teachers and students presenting to you to give you a little more information about what they're doing, but I'm going to kind of give you a little sneak peek here. They're working, they just met with me and Tina Donahue, I want to thank her for her kind of flexibility in working with us. We met last week to start the process of putting together a recycling program in the cafeteria. The great thing about that is we've had students over the last couple of years be interested in wanting to do that, so this is a way we can start to figure out how to do that. And it started with them kind of weighing a lot of the trash and then realizing that we should have some areas where we can recycle the, I mean, you know, Larry Anthony was kind enough years ago to switch over to the paper, the recyclable trays, so we're hoping to kind of incorporate that into it as well, but have kind of a paper, plastic, glass, and then another garbage can titled landfill, which we thought would actually have a lot of, just that statement alone would send a very clear message to the students. So we're looking forward to it. We know the easiest part of this will be to get the students involved, because I know they want to, K through 5, so I'll have more updates... involved, because I know they want to, K through five, so I'll have more updates on that once we start setting it up. On that note, that's a good segue to reminding everyone about the Rhinebeck Eco Challenge happening April 3rd to the 24th. You see some correspondence that looks like that, so if you haven't already, keep an eye out. And basically, it's to make an effort to change a small habit, and learn about students, and their families learning about the connections to land and food, urban development, transportation, other areas that can benefit themselves and our planet, so we hope you can sign up. Some upcoming events, we have ongoing our spirit days, the next one is on the 22nd, it's our rainbow day, and we'll be encouraging students to wear as many colors in one outfit as you can. We have an urban day celebration coming up a little bit later in April, where grade four is going to work, is going to, and again, the RSF is kind of working with us to get saplings to give to those students, we've done that for a couple of years, and it's been very well received. And April 2nd and 3rd, that first week in April, Tuesday and Wednesday, we'll have our New York City LA assessment for grades three through eight, obviously three through five at Chancellor, and then over at the middle school, and that's what's happening so far.
Questions for Mr. King? Diane?
Does each student get sorted on sorted day? Is that how it works?
No, it's more, that's a good question, it's more the teachers. So I get, it's actually kind of nice being the voice, because then I get to kind of make pretend I'm not sure what to do, and call Stuyvesant Stuyvy and stuff like that. So it's each teacher, and then their class gets organized. So the cool thing is, there's four houses, it's across three through five, and there's each grades in every one of the houses, so that's, it kind of represents all the grades. And then every one of their classes, and all the specials, five, they kind of incorporate certain challenges and things related to the characteristics. Yeah, all the kids would take a little too long.
Yeah.
It's about a half hour.
I just wanted to thank you for sharing all these wonderful things, and going out and getting all these wonderful grants from our supporting agencies, it's really fantastic. In terms of state testing, have you thought about how you're going to communicate with parents about participation in those, or not?
We did, we actually pulled last year's kind of what the state had put out, and then we just got an email today with some information around state testing, so, you know, John and I will put our heads together and figure out a way to get information out and let people know when it is. I also use my parent newsletter to just let everyone know when it's happening, but there's a little more information that the state has put out, in addition to the dates and what the test might look like. It talks about links to practice tests, which the state certainly has put up, so anyone can kind of take a look at it and see what's being tested. And then it talks about a lot of the changes over the last several years, getting rid of the time, and strength, things like that. So yeah, we use probably a lot of those materials to figure out how to incorporate that in coming meetings.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start this evening by reporting out on the science fair. I think I had mentioned last time, I was before you, that BMS students, eighth grade students, were participating in the science fair. It's our fourth annual eighth grade science fair, and you'll recall that it's a joint venture between our students and students at Lyndon Avenue Middle School over at Redhook. Students presented their original research projects to a panel of judges again this year, and then during tallying the results, they sat for a presentation and heard a presentation titled "The Effect of Climate Change on Lakes and Ponds" by Dr. Robin Smith, who is an Assistant Professor of Environmental and Urban Studies over at Bar College, so, you know, it's a nice connection that we maintain. We did have a student place, and we also had two honorable mentions. Participation in this event has risen each year, and we look forward to continuing to be able to provide this opportunity, again, in partnership with both Bar College and with Redhook, to our students. And again, while we offered this opportunity to sixth and seventh graders this year, we had, we didn't have any sixth and seventh graders who opted to participate, but the school, as well as the cooperating teacher from Redhook are looking for ways to encourage more of our younger students to get involved. Under the umbrella of social-emotional learning, last month, Mrs. Rodier, our school social worker, presented to both sixth and seventh grade classes in small groups, I think she used health classes in the seventh grade, and I think she used math classes in the sixth grade, and she presented to students on stress and mindfulness, specifically what happens within their own bodies when they experience stress, hoping that students will begin to identify what's happening, and then how to use mindfulness skills to de-escalate themselves. She returned to seventh grade classes a week later to continue teaching mindful breathing techniques with a focus on resilience and neuroplasticity. Students learned about Carol Wex's work, fixed mindset versus growth mindset, and ways to move through difficult tasks or challenges by shifting their own thinking. Her work is ongoing, and she plans to return to sixth grade classes twice more this school year, once quite soon, as Brett said, state testing is coming up shortly. She intends to work with sixth graders just prior to state testing to work on stress reduction techniques, and then she intends to return and present again to sixth grade students just prior to the Top 100 Project. You'll recall that that's a project that's done collaboratively in social studies and writing classes later on in the school year, and it culminates with a, you know, a presentation to classmates, and she's looking to discuss self-esteem building as it relates to public speaking and her work. You'll also recall that this is very closely related to the work that I reported out to you, that Alice Coleman, fearless living coach, is doing with our sixth grade students. So we continue to attempt to address the social-emotional needs of our students and to build their resilience. Sponsored by the Art Club, and thanks to a grant from the PTSO, we have a group of students that have been working with Emily Robinson, the educator and camp director of Claremont State Historic Park. Under the instruction of a professional comic artist, students have been producing their own, have been taken step by step through the process of writing and producing, illustrating their own comics, based on their research of members of the Luton family. The comics will be compiled into a volume and copied and printed for each student, and the originals, I believe, are going to be on display at Claremont State Park during a number of their upcoming events in the springtime. Earlier this month, BMS held its annual winter dance, this year the Student Council leadership again, this is the second year that we've done this, voted to use it as an SPCA fundraiser and donate all of the proceeds from the dance to the SPCA down in Hyde Park. The Student Council donated a pair of AirPods that was then raffled off to students. Tickets were traded for donated items for the fundraiser, and we were able, in a two-hour dance, to raise 700 items that we then donated to the SPCA a couple of days later. Mr. Weisenthal and I are two-for-two. Each time we've gone down there and we posed for a picture that we could then share out with the district, they bring a dog out, dog sits with us, gets a picture with us. This year it was Trooper, and Trooper was adopted, as was the dog that was in our picture last year, about a half an hour after we took the picture with them, so they want us back next year. Thanks to the hard work of Mrs. Fode, we began an after-school extra help program yesterday, specifically for students who are current or former English language learners, or whose home language is, whose first language at home is not English. In addition to Mrs. Fode, BMS students were able to receive tutoring support from five high school volunteers. We were very excited for this, we had six students participating in the program to start. Mrs. Fode and five high school volunteers, we had a one-to-one staff, I guess isn't the right word, but tutor, two student ratio. We're very excited about this program, this is something that Mrs. Fode and I have talked about for quite some time. You know, the CLS, CLS has the LOL program, the Lifeform Learning, is that what it's called? Lifeform Learning Program at CLS? This is kind of a continuation, or at least, you know, the basic continuation of that program. Culture Connect was not able to fund it or run that program, we were able to find some funding within our own budget to begin this program, and we're excited to be able to offer it now that we have growing population of elves in the middle school. Couple of upcoming annual events, next Monday we will hold our 10th Annual Top Chef Competition, and every time I put my board report together, I'm very surprised by these numbers. This activity was started many years ago to encourage students to take up cooking and baking, to partner students with like interests, to connect students who might have an interest in culinary arts with community members, and it's quickly become a student favorite. Once again, students' culinary talents will be judged by a number of faculty members. Mr. Anthony will be joining us again, Ms. Usiewitz, our home ec teacher, as well as a number of chefs from local restaurants, Josh Kornor, Ryan Viatour, Jared Monaco, among several others, so we're excited about that event. Also, next Friday, Artists in Action Day is back, you'll recall that a couple of years we took a one-year hiatus on this program, but we're excited that we've generated some, you know, some presenter interest, a presenter pool again for Artists in Action Day. The goal of the day is to partner with parents and community members to expose students to a variety of new activities. While it's been increasingly difficult to generate the presenter pool, we are finalizing it right now. We could certainly use a couple more individuals, if anybody knows anybody with some talents. Students are going to cycle through a variety of presentations on a wide variety of topics, including landscape, architecture, ballet, ceramics, photography, graphic design, creative arts, therapy, therapy among many others. And in fact, thanks to the support of Dr. Davenport and the high school staff, one of our presenters is going to be a Rhinebeck High School junior, who looked out to me and offered his services. He is a self-taught luteer, a term I was not familiar with, but apparently a luteer is an individual who builds and repairs guitars and other stringed instruments, so very excited to have him share his talents with us. While our keynote speaker has not yet been finalized, I look forward to sharing that information in the next report. And finally, I'm sure something springs around the corner, a lot of light sports programs began just yesterday afternoon. A little bit happening at BMS.
It'll be another month before we're outside.
Any questions?
Before they get on the field.
It was in the 50s.
It's going to be three weeks till we can step onto the grass, because it's too wet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, before I started, I just wanted to amplify a little bit of something that our previous speaker, Sherri, mentioned. We have, she mentioned 19 students who participate in the Career and Technical and Educational Program, and I'd like to point out that the students absolutely love the programs that they're in. They experience sustained levels of high achievement, consistently named to the honor roll on CTI, and every year we have one, two, three students who are eligible to participate in Skills USA competitions, which occur both at the regional and the state level, so for your consideration and reflection. I'll start again with BLPT news. The BLPT meets next week, and we're continuing to develop, and we'll finalize plans for a community read. A subcommittee had been formed to select a couple of titles for the BLPT to choose from. We have that small group of texts that we are reviewing. I'm not authorized to share those titles with you at this point, however, I can say that if you're interested, there will be more detailed information in the upcoming issue of Rhinebeck Reality, the sixth edition, which will hit on that newsstand, it will be made available by the end of this week, so I encourage you to take a look. In our English department, our students will participate in Spelling Bee, sponsored by Literacy Connections in the Hudson Valley, that's going to take place on April 2nd. A number of our students in creative writing and in our journalism club will attend Woodstock Day School's annual Lit Comp on March 29th, and they'll learn from experts in writing and art and design for publications. In our social studies department, members of the social studies department attended the state conference Thursday, Friday last week. Among the many presentations they participated in was a talk on social-emotional learning in the classroom, in the social studies classroom, given by Professor Paul Vermette from Niagara University, who wrote a book called Group Work That Works. With the support of the Directive of Curriculum Instruction, we're looking at the possibility of inviting Dr. Vermette to work with our faculty next year and support us in our efforts in implicating social-emotional learning in our classrooms. In the art department, our art students, our advanced art students will be traveling on the 19th of March to the High Line and Whitney Museum of American Art. In the guidance department, our program of studies has been developed and publicized, our counselors are meeting with their students over the next several weeks and into the next month, and we are on track to keep to the same timeline we were on last year, to develop master schedule and share pretty solid numbers with the Board of Education. Unlike my colleagues in CLS and BMS, there are no state tests, so the region's exams that we have to administer, maybe because, as he wants to feel left out, we do have to administer field tests, and we're required to do so. I used to think that this was optional, but I've been since disabused of that notion. It makes it seem like it's optional, when you receive that letter from SED, but when you dig in a little deeper, you realize that they're not asking, they're telling you. That this year, we're going to administer a field test in Algebra I, a field test in Algebra II, and an essay exam in Global Studies, which takes two periods, so we'll be administering those field tests. A couple of weeks ago, our debate club attended Bard's annual debate tournament, which featured teams from five local schools. Bard awards the top five teams and the top 10 individual speakers based upon performances across three different debate sessions. Our students and our team distinguish themselves, Rhinebeck students won four out of five team awards, and five out of 10 individuals did awards, so they certainly deserve a of our congratulations. This week in co-curricular activities, the National Honesty Society is sponsoring Spirit Week, which will be culminated by a pancake breakfast fundraiser Friday morning in support of the Grace Smith House. I'm happy to report that, I just checked this out before the board meeting with my own eyes, that our set build is underway, things look very good, we have a set builder, we had an outpouring of volunteer support in the event we needed volunteer support. Several of those volunteers are seated behind me right now as we speak, Mr. Kementzer, Mr. King, we will not need their services, but we're certainly grateful for the offer, and many of our community volunteers will come on Set Build Day, so the show will go on. As I mentioned, the newspaper's coming out soon. In student council news, our student council has arranged to work with David Levine. David Levine, as I think I may have mentioned, is the director of the Teaching Empathy Institute. He's a consultant who's worked with our faculty this year, and I think some years ago with Mr. Kementzer's faculty at BMS. Mr. Levine is going to work with our student council officers and representatives on a day in which he's going to develop peer leadership skills with them, and then on the second day, he's going to facilitate their planning of a school-wide spirit event, and we're looking for that event to take place in late April and early May, when the weather's more cooperative. Recently, the Gender Equity Club in the GSA sent a large group of students to the Love Shouldn't Hurt Conference, sponsored by the Grace Smith House. Some of the feedback I've received so far indicates some very powerful presentations, and I'll be meeting with the advisors and some students on Friday to hear feedback and some of their suggestions in terms of the takeaways from that conference. As you remember, I spoke about the model of UN's field trip to the United Nations. As a follow-up, on March 6th, Arnold Pronto, who is our host at the UN, came to speak with our students at Rhinebeck High School. He spoke for an hour and a half with our students, with a lot of fascinating information regarding UN procedure and the realities of diplomatic relations, and also offered to come back and speak with our students more. Looking ahead, our main event is our Spring Musical, which will take place on, of course, April 5th, 6th, and 7th.
Lisa, I wanted to ask about the field testing. Will that be done in connection with the administration of the regions, or is that going to be done separately?
It's done separately. We must administer the field tests no later than May 24th, so typically, we receive this test in early May, I'll let our faculty know, and they will, for the two math tests, they're able to give the tests within one class period, so it's not a significant interruption to the school day. The global field exam, however, is an 80-minute exam, so we have, we end up having to pull all students, this is how we've done it in the past, out of a couple of periods, typically in the morning, and we administer that test in auditorium. auditorium.
Is there an opt-out for field tests for individuals? I hate to ask it, but I'm just curious.
The state education guidelines are less than detailed, so I'm quoting from memory, which is always a dangerous thing. Students should be encouraged to take the field test. In the past, when students have opted out, then that's fine. They'll send them to another location, they go to the library or something of that nature. A lot of times, students don't opt out. The students see it as a practice for the regency exams. But there are a handful who would say, you know, I don't really feel like doing this. That's of course accepted.
You mentioned set build days. Are there particular days that the sets are going to be worked on, or is it?
Our director has, he's compiled a list of individuals who have volunteered to help. And so when those, I don't know that those days have been determined yet, but when they are, he communicates the schedule to our potential volunteers.
So that's much different than it used to be, where the weekends were time for tech to work most of the day.
Yes, yeah. It's a new, it's a whole new smoke.
New frontier, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Tom, any developments with the budget?
All right. So in front of you, I've placed three documents. They're all hole-punched. Two of them I don't even want you to look at, because there's no need to, but it's for your binder. And that basically is the big document, which is nineteen pages long. This is just the backup for it. And then there's one for the revenues. This is just for your book, because this one here, which goes through the development process to date, is the one that I want you to take a look at. This is the one we typically use. And I mentioned some things over the weekend when we had our board work session, and also in finance, we talked a little bit. And so we have a few changes here that I want to talk about, and there's still a couple of questions that are up in the air yet still. So I did talk about, in the finance committee, not particularly at the work session, but it was one thing that I noticed as I was going through things, is that I found an expenditure that was on our special education side and remembered that the child that was there was actually a foster child. So that cost is going to be borne by their home district. So I put the corresponding revenue against it that we'd collect from the school district in question. So I was able to add $50,000 to the budget, or to the revenue side of the budget, which helps reduce the tax levy. But I've also had to make some additions to it. And so really, the first three, the first one is BOSI Services, $2,000. That's for superintendent evaluation software. It's something the bill just came in, and just, geez, that's not in the budget, so I added it to it. In the next line, other expenses, an increase of $900, and this is the lower Hudson Coalition, educational coalition. That's something we started up this year, so this is the dues. And the next one is a software BOSI's code. And the $3,000 additional is Steve Jensen, who is our Director of Technology and Communications, remembered that next year, we have some equipment that is coming off of warranty, and that will go onto our service contract. So we wanted to get that in the budget, because some of those things pop up the next year, and it's like, oh, didn't budget for it. So luckily, Steve caught that in time, and we were able to...
So the $3,000 is the cost of the service contract?
The cost of the service contract. I can't remember what the piece of equipment it was, off the top of my head. Now, the next two go in conjunction with the one on the bottom, being a deletion. So in our original budget, I had put $10,240, which was the amount of money that we were to raise to the first of three years of expenditures to BOSI's for the capital project.
Hundred, two hundred thousand?
Yeah, $102,400. What did I say?
Ten.
$102,400. Sorry. A little different number. So in speaking with our financial consultant at Bernie Donigan's office, who is actually working for the BOSI's also, when we met with him about a month ago, he talked us through it, because, as I said, though, we have three years of expenditures of a million dollars, but yet, we can expend this thing over twenty years, going through a serial bond, which we will do. We don't have a million dollars laying around. There are a couple of school districts who are banging it out of their pocket. But it also has an impact on our tax cap. So this first year for them, because this is the low, they're only paying about one tenth the first year. Next year, they pay like six tenths. You're going to have a tough time next year if you plan to continue with cash, because that's going to direct it out of their tax cap. What we're planning to do here right now is to borrow money for this first year, doing a ban for the, what we need, $102,400. But in reality, we're going to be expensing this over twenty years. So we're going to be, over the years, and though the numbers will change a little bit, we're going to be paying about $71,000 a year, versus next year, a hundred, the following year, like $600,000, and then $300,000. So we have those numbers are in there. So it really escalates. And so some school districts are able just to use the money they have on hand, as opposed to going out and borrowing the money and doing it that way. Could we do it for the first year? Yeah, we could, but not for the second year. We don't have $600,000, just to say, let's just put it in our budget and pay it. So this is actually going to show the true reflection of the cost, because it will become a future liability. So even though we're going to pay $100,000 out, we're going to expense about $70,000, and $30,000 difference is just going to be a liability for the future. So this actually frees up about $30,000 for our use in the budget. So if we flip the page over, we'll give you kind of an update. So the net effect of this is, we save $50,000, it's not showing here, $50,000, but we're showing a reduction of expenditures of $22,600, which gives us a new total that's slightly under $35 million, or 3.13%, which drives a current tax levy of 3.59. We are capped at 3.4% as our tax cap. So right now, we are over the tax levy limit right now, just over $56,000. There's still some work that needs to be done, with some of it I'll talk to you in an executive session about, in regards to recently and future negotiations. And also, we've gotten new health insurance information, but that has not been put through the wringer yet to figure out how much of reduction that is. Or in addition, I don't know yet. I'm feeling it's a reduction until all the numbers play out. So that's where we're left at this time. We have a delta a little over $56,000. Some other numbers I have to get yet, and one that got mentioned at the night is CTI. At this time, we don't know how many kids are going to CTI. I have twenty-five budgeted. We have nineteen there. But that's not to say we don't know who these, the current sophomores, who would be juniors, how many of them are going to select that program, and then how many current juniors are going to continue with the program. You don't have to, most of them do, but it's not always a requirement, so...
We know that before the budget gets finalized?
Before the budget gets finalized. Like you said, they're in the process right now, the guidance of putting in schedules and finding out what each of the students would like to do. So within a couple of weeks, we'll have a number. In fact, I'll probably have a preliminary number, probably in another week or so, just based on, you know, what's come so far and where they think it's going. And I would think, over the years, that number will tend to start shrinking a little bit, just because of enrollment going down. But those classes have not gotten up to the high school. So I'd expect about twenty to twenty-five for the next couple of years, but then start to see that lower, unless they come up with new exciting programs. With the construction project, I mean, we haven't heard of them doing any new programs as to, I know everybody liked aeronautical, that type of a thing. So far, they haven't mentioned anything like that, but they could come up with something new and exciting that could drive some kids to it. I know when you come out with new programs, it tends to pique people's interest into trying. Any questions in regards to my very brief update?
Lisa? So I think you buried the lead, Tom. On the first draft, you were showing revenue shortfall above the tax levy limit of $128,755, and now you're showing it at $56,175. So that's a considerable reduction.
Going in the right direction. You've still got a little bit of work to do, and I think we can accomplish it without making any particular cuts to the budget. I'm hoping we're able to get lower than what the tax cap is, so that we consider items that maybe we may want to bring into the budget. But can't really have those serious discussions until we know we're under it yet.
Understood, but it's important for us to know that we are moving in the right direction.
We're moving in the right direction, yes. And hopefully, maybe we get a state aid update in the meantime. I don't know. I wouldn't expect a lot, but I'll take $5,000. It helps.
Sure.
Dr. For anybody might be watching at home, can you give a very short explanation of why the tax levy limit is 3.4 and not the magic number of two percent?
Yeah, and it gets into, I know a lot of people know it as the two percent cap and things of that nature, but that is not the reality of it. Unfortunately, it's gotten that tag, too. So there are three parts to, there's multiple parts, but there's three main parts to your tax cap calculation. The first one is, what is the CPI? In this case, this year, it's at over two percent, but it's capped at two. So even if the number come in at five, CPI number, super price indicator at five, it's capped at two. It's also got a floor of zero, because a couple of years ago, we actually had a negative number, but they allowed us to keep it at zero. So that's number one. CPI is the biggest factor of it all. Second one is, what is the growth factor in this school district? This year, it's .89. It's almost a one percent increase in the value of your community. So you're able to absorb an extra one percent. So if your levy goes up one percent, that means everybody else is paying one percent less. So if you went out with a zero percent increase, it'd be basically a .89 percent decrease that everybody, because the new program, the new properties picked up. Don't worry about it.
He gets pretty excited about this.
And that's been one of the biggest factors in the school districts from, since the start of this, is we've actually had a pretty nice growth factor over the number of years. So you're very lucky as a community here that you are seeing growth in your community, because that is actually gone towards, you know, improving your programs. There are other school districts across this, across the county have seen very little. There's some that've only seen a one percent increase of all eight years so far of it. Ours is probably up in the neighborhoods of about six percent over the eight years. So about .7% typically is our increase on the tax, or on the roll side. The third major component is your capital expenditures, okay? So what you do is you take your debt service for capital and capital projects, and you subtract out your state aid. That is what is required of your taxpayers to pay that amount, because they have authorized that through voting, okay? And that can change from year to year. As your state aid goes up or down, that will change everything. So what's occurred with our school district here is, actually, our billing aid has gone down, because our debt service has gone down a little. We had a little bit of a debt service cause. We had an energy performance contract that went off the books. So less debt service, less state aid. But we're in the process now of ramping up towards getting to our full capital project, what we think the total expenditures will be when we go out to bond. Last year, we added $200,000. This year, we're adding $250,000. Ultimately, we need to get somewhere between $700,000, $750,000, and next year would be that third and last year, the phase of. So that additional $250,000, because it's been voter-approved, has automatically been able to add to your tax cap. There's no offset against it, because we don't have aid coming in, but in the future, that will have a big factor on that. Because we've taken this money in so far, we don't have to go out and borrow all $12 million. We could go borrow $11.5 million, so we reduce our interest over the life of it. But that's a choice we have a little bit further down the road. Is the money we're collecting now, that 250, that is put aside, and then we can use those money to reduce the amount of what we go out to borrow, if we want to. You don't have to, but we can use for that purpose. So that is the big factors. That's how we get to 3.4. Almost 2.89, just because of CPI and growth, but then that other part of about a half a percent is with the additional $250,000 for the upcoming capital project.
Thank you.
All right. If you don't understand it, please, by all means, give me a call.
I'm good, and I also...
Because I can sit down with numbers.
You probably did that in the meeting that I missed, didn't you?
No. We did.
It is important.
Yep, it's important to know that.
All right. Any other budget questions? Joe?
Not so much questions, but I did mention at our budget work session on Saturday morning that because Steve Boucher, our athletic director, was not able to be there due to another commitment to sectional athletics, I did ask him to come this evening just to be able to tell us a little bit about the interclassical athletic budget and answer any questions that you guys might have had Saturday that you haven't gotten answered. So he is here with us, and Steve, maybe give us a quick overview of your budget, and then whatever questions there might be.
There are, I hope you've had it, or had it, or can get it...
Well, if you go to your big document that you just got today, you would go to page number seventeen, page seventeen, starting at the top.
There are very little changes to the overall athletic budget. Pretty much, the major changes are in the 400 account, and that's, we're looking to add Huddle, which is the video sharing software that we use currently with basketball, and we split the cost with football and with Pine Plains, adding it for our other sports. And what Huddle allows, one, the coaches to do, is it allows the coaches to have scout sharing tapes. They can use other schools, and they can send tapes back and forth. But it's also nice for coaches to take and break the tape down, and then show the kids what they need to work on, what they did well. What's also really nice about it is this program called Huddle Assist, which we started with basketball a couple of years ago. They actually, Huddle breaks the tape down. So you can go on and you can say, you know, Joe, I want to see all of Joe's points. And you can click on Joe, and you hit his points, and it'll take you to all of his videos. So what that then allows kids to do is, it allows kids to create their own highlight videos. So kids will create highlight videos. If you look on my son Trax's high school athletics, various different kids have their Huddle name on their Twitter accounts, so that colleges know where to go and look, and they can just see, you know. But it's also a nice thing, the majority of our kids aren't going to probably go on and become, you know, Division One collegiate athletics, but they do have the ability to create their own highlight to have with them, so they can remember, you know, back in the day.
But it could run.
So that's really the significant change we have built in there, all the various contractual costs that, you know, just continue to, as they go.
Well, one thing to bring up, and that part of that increase there is also for, as we talked about, I don't remember what committee we talked about, was the trainer. The athletic trainer is an additional cost this year. I can't remember where we discussed it, but I remember at some point that was discussed. So there's that in there. And also, the cost of Pine Plains football continues to grow a little bit, not tremendously, but there's cost to it, and that increases every year, so...
So that's all in the $15,000?
Yes, yes.
Increase?
Yep.
Okay. And is the football increase salary-driven, or...
Well, salary, yeah, because transportation...
Transportation is separate. But yeah, it's not humongous. It's about $1,000. But in the BOSI Services, you see an increase of $5,000, and that is for family ID that we use for many different things, but it never had gotten budgeted before. And actually, we've expanded family ID to not just be athletic, but just be across the board.
We're hopeful that, I'm trying to convince, that we're going to bring that onboard for all of our middle school and high school, so that duplication of filling out paperwork can be minimized.
Greatly minimized.
Love that program.
In addition, there's also an increase for referees in there too. Referees get paid out of BOSIs. It's a service that they provide to us, so they, all referees are paid out of, was it Orange BOSI?
Orange Ulster BOSIs.
Orange Ulster BOSIs, but then we're backbuilt all those, that refereeing cost.
Mark.
Could you just speak to combined sports? I know we, football was mentioned a couple of minutes ago, but proposals for other sports combining, and if there's any update on those?
So I have spoken with Pine Plains. Pine Plains actually reached out to me concerning field hockey, because they had discussed potentially merging last year, and our kids wanted to stay here. We had thirteen seniors, so this year, two juniors. They have expressed, the kids have expressed an interest in wanting to continue to play field hockey, and obviously, two is not in the team. Pine Plains has said, you know, we're still interested, and we'd be interested not only in varsity, we'd also be interested if you have anybody else. They run a modified aid program, seven eight nine, so if we had kids that were interested, they would be able to play also. In terms of cost, that's something that Joe and superintendent Pine Plains, Barney Handler, are currently discussing. I know that we're currently running that bus every day, so, you know, that would increase, it would actually kind of lower the per student cost in terms of transportation. I'm not, I don't know whether or not we would be able to generate enough interest at the modified level to eventually build our program back, especially we look at the numbers of our students that are going down, and the amount of sports that are interested in the fall. But at least we give our kids an opportunity to be exposed to field hockey. The only other one that we had discussed was swimming. Redhook is still, not sure whether or not they're going to have swimming. In addition, we had a section meeting today, and there are those section rules that would have to change. And I did propose that the combining teams committee at least look at that and, you know, see whether or not that number of seven for swimming is a good number or not. I did also suggest, and the executive director from the New York State Public High School was there, that possibly maybe we should look at the rebalancing of sports. So rather than have fifty percent of all of the girls' sports for the girls offered in the fall, spread it out, so that we could, you know, have more student involvement in the winter season. We'll see. That's, I think, a very heavy lift across the state, but, you know, at least the conversation started.
There might be more of a chance to get the number moved than it would be to switch to sports. But we brought, Steve brought up both as options, and especially with the idea of looking at the numbers for combining. There was at least agreement that they look at, and this isn't going to happen overnight. And, you know, the other thing, as Steve already mentioned, Redhook hasn't made any kind of commitment to do anything at this point. So regardless of what Redhook does, we'll keep working it from the section side, and, you know, we'll keep you posted.
Stephen.
The Pine Plains merger with field hockey, is there an interest of younger kids to play? Is there an option to kind of just get the two seniors next year through so they can play their varsity?
I know that there are a few kids that have been doing an after-school program over at Chancellor. I'm not sure, you know, whether or not they will pick up and want to play field hockey, or whether they're going to, you know, soccer, or, you know. I did have two ninth graders go up to me and ask, when do you sign up for field hockey? I was like, well, there's two of you, so we're going to need like, you know, nine more, twelve more. So, you know, I think that they may be interested in going to Pine Plains in May.
When are they supposed to let you know about?
Well, signups for fall sports don't start until one month prior to the season. And as of right now, we're starting on August nineteenth, so that would be July nineteenth is when we would start the signups. As we get towards the end of May, I will have a meeting for all students interested in playing field hockey, get the Pine Plains coach to come over so that they can start. I do know that one of our students has been playing in a winter league with Pine Plains at the Dome.
It's probably more Joe Thompson, but I know with football, the financial arrangement of mergers could be different. I know one time, we did like a per student cost, then sometimes it's just split. Is that the same with all mergers? Because, no, typically.
Goes according to the school district.
So whatever you want to, whatever the two of you agree with.
Yeah, and our agreement with Pine Plains for football has been since football, given the numbers of athletes, typically, there are two coaches for football. So we pay for one, they pay for the other. We take care of the transportation of our kids. They take care of the transportation to game, you know, game transportation. So it seems like a, you know, pretty reasonable way to share. You'll recall in previous years when we had an arrangement with several other school districts over the years, they were charging us a per student cost, which I'll just say, I think splitting the costs like we have in Pine Plains is been more equitable for both schools. They're not making any money from us. We're sharing the cost, and I think that's the way school districts ought to be dealing with one another, is sharing the cost. So I do have a call in to Dr. Handler over at Pine Plains, asking him, so if we did merge with you with Pine Plains for field hockey, what kind of arrangement would you want to talk about? And he's, at least so far, been pretty reasonable about not looking to make money off a merger. But we'll see. I don't want to speak for him, but if it's anything like football, I'm guessing he may say, well, let's split the cost of the coach with us, and I think that would be reasonable.
And when do you think we get an idea of the cost of what a merged field hockey program would look like?
I was expecting him to call me this week, but he hasn't gotten back to me yet, but I imagine before our next meeting. I mean, if he doesn't get back to me within the next couple of days, I'll call him, yank his chain a little bit.
Thank you. Jacqueline.
So I can't remember from last year, but can you tell us about what other fundraising might happen, or what other costs that students bear, or parents bear, or are there, you know, is there anything?
There are.
Well, speak to a new sport, Steve.
So for a new sport, so if we wanted to start a sport, the last time we added sports, which I think, if I remember correctly, it was seven years ago, I think. For some reason, I have that number seven standing out in my head. The board said, okay, as long as it came out at zero cost in the district. Which, that's tough for new sports to start, because you're looking at booster clubs to be able to fundraise the money for anybody within our student population that wants to be part of that sport. So that's where we were. You know, in terms of adding new sports, I don't know how we could add new sports without raising the budget, without doing it that way at this point.
Yeah, but for existing sports, do we have any?
Other than like shoes?
Personal.
A glove?
Personal stuff, right?
A stick?
Right.
No, there are, no. You know, they want to buy their own clothes, you know. Our coaches will set up the online store so that they can get all that very sort of swag.
It's not uniforms, though.
Right, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve, for your time. Appreciate it. That. They said sarcastically.
Yeah, right, gleefully.
All right.
Steve, come down to the office tomorrow.
They're waiting for decisions to be made.
They are.
They said if you wait like ten o'clock from the beginning of the schedule, they would read the message.
Do you need signatures? Oh, good. Nothing good on TV tonight, how is?
I'll just point out that those are three field hockey players.
Oh, they're field hockey players, okay.
I thought they were listening with rapt attention.
So we're not going to be making a decision about field hockey tonight, just so you know.
That must be one of the seniors.
Thanks, Rachel.
All right, so moving on to board committee reports, starting with policy.
Policy, that would be me. All right, so the policy committee, we discussed the mental health policy. The New York State Education Department is requiring that by September first of this year, all districts have a mental health policy. The requirements are not specific, and NISTA has distributed a sample policy for guidance. After reviewing, we discovered that our district already hasn't practiced much of what is covered in their sample policy. Joe is editing the policy with input from Emily Davidson and the administrators, both of whom are reviewing the sample policy to fully understand if there's anything that we are not doing to comply. And we also discussed the question regarding skipping grades slash advanced learners. I was raised during the curriculum committee, and we, the policy committee said that we would discuss it. And it is not customary to have a policy, and the committee is recommending that we do not write a policy for this practice. And we are getting together again on March twenty-eighth.
Questions for policy. Lisa.
So as you pointed out, the curriculum committee has been talking about this, and I'm pretty sure we haven't come to a decision on making a recommendation, or if we were going to make a recommendation, what kind of a recommendation we'd make. So I want to make sure that the policy committee's position is not, under no circumstances would the policy committee consider writing a policy, only that that's something that the policy committee doesn't feel like it ought to be initiating.
Correct. Oh, no, I think we're feeling that there is no reason for us to have a policy in regards to this topic.
And that's because other districts don't have a policy?
No, it's because of, that's one of the things. The other thing is that we were feeling that we didn't necessarily want to put something down in writing that the, that would have, be, put something in writing that could be used. It's not, that it was not necessary. Then, that we were going to leave it to the individuals, like a case-by-case basis. That if we wrote something down in, that if we wrote something down that maybe an individual who is not necessarily appropriate for skipping grades, but if it's written down, they can say, well, I can skip a grade. The other thing too is that it would also be, how would it work with a high school as far as, you know, skipping grades? And so we just felt that we didn't want to put anything down in writing. We wanted to leave it for a case-by-case basis.
So let me ask you this.
Yes.
I mean, if this is not a question that the committee feels, wants to answer here, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but since this is something that's an ongoing discussion in the curriculum committee, would the, assuming, for purposes of discussion, that the curriculum committee decided to make a recommendation to the board that there be a policy around advanced learners that dealt with skipping grades, either as the entirety or as part of a number of recommendations, would the policy committee reconsider if the board were to say, yes, we think that's something the policy committee should take up?
I think we're always open to discussion.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think, just thinking back on there, I mean, I think, you know, the way we talked about it, you know, specifically, this usually comes down to the principals and having a conversation. It's not, there isn't, it doesn't seem to be an issue that we've had with students going to principal and being denied, or not being denied. It didn't seem like there was a problem that a policy needed to be created. It's usually a conversation usually between, like I said, the parent and the billing principal.
Except that, one of the things that we're talking about in curriculum is whether there ought to be something more than just a case-by-case determination, you know, whether we should develop something that's more, more involved, more structured, that's based in testing and developmental research.
And best practices.
Yes, it's an ongoing discussion in curriculum. I'm not sure when the curriculum committee will be ready to make a recommendation. If that, just don't want to be in a situation where the policy committee is feeling like this is a settled issue, then curriculum says, oh, well, here's our recommendation, and now, you know, there's some sense of, we don't want to be stepping on policy's toes. Policy doesn't want to be foreclosing curriculum.
I wouldn't feel that way at all.
Yeah, I think if we had more information, or, you know, something on the direction of what the policy would go to, because when you start, when you build a policy, and you start to think about what it would look like, you know.
Right. That's the ongoing discussion.
Yeah, so I think with more information, I mean, we're certainly taking it up.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions for policy? All right, facilities.
Those are mine. So this is about two weeks ago, we met to discuss the bids for the voter-approved construction project. We discussed the qualifying meeting that was held with the bidders. All the bidders were determined to be qualified to do the work that they were bidding on. There was only one bidder for site work and roofing. As you all know, we met in executive session earlier this evening to discuss the various bidders. So there's a couple of the contracts that we proposed would be rejected and rebid. So we'll be taking action on that later. There was also an alternate proposal on electrical, which we'll be also dealing with later this evening. And it was Lou Rodriguez's recommendation that we go ahead and award the bids on the remaining work other than those two contracts. And so we discussed that we would have an executive session tonight, so that we could, you know, make the full board aware of, you know, what was discussed and the various issues related to the contractors and the bids. So we'll take action later.
Any questions for the facilities? Finance.
Well, those are mine. We started out talking about the school lunch fund, looking at the P and L through January two thousand and nineteen versus last year. Cafeteria fund is in the black this year, which is great. There's a couple more days of school compared to last year, so that might help with dollar amount. Also, more participation at the buying side as opposed to the free and reduced side, which has also helped. So, so far, so good. It does look like, though, at the end of the year, there is a little bit less purchasing and a lot more overhead with respect to closing the lunch down and inventory and stuff, so I wouldn't get too excited that it's going to stay in the black all year. But so far, it's looking really good. Tom mentioned that personnel should start looking at some cafeteria worker salaries with the increase in minimum wage. The gap between what we're paying them and minimum wage is very small, so it's hard to find anybody, and they're short-staffed at the moment. We looked at the budget, which Tom so eloquently explained already. We're looking at that budget document as well, trying to piece together some other schools' public budget and some charts and graphs to make it pretty, a little bit more explanation about each side of the budget and what the numbers really look at. So we started looking at that. And accounting software is ongoing. Envision training's in progress. It does look like a lot of the spreadsheets that Tom's maintaining separately is going to be able to be put into there, which would be a little bit streamlined and better housed, I guess, for it. Next meeting is April four.
Questions for finance? Diane. Diane?
Not really a question, but I, even though it may change, as someone who may have been critical of the school lunch in the past, I would just say, "Good job, Tom and Larry, and it's nice to see it in the black and in the white." Even if it changes, I would say this is a big deal, because there were times where we were nowhere near that.
Yeah, we're further into the black than we ever had at this point in the year, so we're kind of hoping it stays through and we don't have to come back, but...
Yeah.
But there is, like I say, they're on the expenditure side, our salaries are down a little bit because we are short-staffed, so there is savings because of that, but we need to fill that hole because they're starting to feel the wear and tear of it. Yeah, no, we're going in the right direction, and every year we seem to be a lot closer, getting closer to zero. So, I'm hoping this year will be the year.
I think it's remarkable in that we are having declining enrollment, and we're managing to keep our chin above water. So, I mean, there are two things working, the one not particularly enabling increased participation. I mean, it seems kind of intuitive, but I think in that respect, it's even more, more of an accomplishment.
All right. Communications are mine. Beginning of the meeting, Liz raised some parent concerns she'd run into someone in the community.
Jacqueline.
Sorry? Sorry, Jacqueline.
It's okay.
Right, looking at your name, which is right above Jacqueline. Regarding the set designer for the play, and also the misunderstanding about whether kids had to sit for AP exams, there seems to be some misinformation out there. So, Jacqueline is going to encourage her friend to talk to Dr. Davenport directly. We talked a little bit about state testing opt-outs, and really, you know, Joe points out that we haven't been penalized in the past, but now that ESA guidelines are a little bit more well-defined, what it could mean for our district if we have that less than 95% participation rate is that our School of Good Standing designation could be downgraded. If that's the case, then the state starts up with their improvement plans, which takes our ability to direct our programs out of our hands, and we don't want that. So, Joe's going to talk to the principals about getting some word out to parents about what it could mean if we have high opt-out rates moving forward. We also talked about the budget newsletter. Steve Jensen brought last year's, and we identified areas that needed updating for this year, new things that we wanted to highlight, thanks to community support, that kind of thing. He set up a Teams account on Office 365 so that we can edit and share ideas on that. By our next meeting in April, it's going to need to be ready to go to the printer for mailing, printing and mailing. He also showed us a sample of a potential brochure layout for the school district, which we all quite liked. So, that brochure highlights community programs, students and staff, and just sort of quick snippets and good visuals. So, we're looking forward to working on that after budget time, hopefully by the end of the year, so that we can get those into the community. And then, we turned to that giant Budget 101 document, which we really feel like would be a resource for any individual in the community who wants to understand school budgeting. It's a reference material, it's more than a document that you're going to hand out. It's going to be a web-based document that folks can use if they've got questions. It'll have a full glossary. Hopefully, it will work nicely with whatever the Finance Committee is putting together in terms of descriptors for different budget codes. Next meeting, April 11th, we'll finalize the newsletter and Budget 101.
Diane?
So, with the state testing opt-outs, what, I know we're going to need to communicate with our parents about that, but as we're kind of obligated to improve our numbers, I'm wondering if it's appropriate with the students, we don't really know why people are opting out anymore. I think it's changed a little bit over the years, it's become a day off of school. I'm just wondering if it's appropriate, maybe with students that are opting out, to get a sense of why they're opting out. You know, maybe it's information that they're not aware of has changed, or something with the test, maybe they're just not informed, or if there's other concerns that we can bring to the state that we don't know about, and so I'm just wondering if it's appropriate to maybe get a, find out, survey, ask, you know, why they're, why they're opting out?
Seems like it couldn't hurt.
Jacqueline? I'm just wondering, when students opt out or when parents opt out, do they have to send in a letter?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah? Would that be an opportunity, place to say, you know, "If you are opting out, you know, we ask that you share with us your reasoning," or is that over the line?
No, but I mean, we typically would know until the day of the test, so...
Right. It's for an after...
And there would be a follow-up, certainly.
No, it'd be for, like, next year, kind of information.
And even without anything in writing, we still know who's opting out.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, as a...
Well, no, but they don't give a reason.
Combined venue.
Could we ask them for a reason?
Excuse me, we would have to follow up and ask, and they could either give us the reason or tell us to fly a kite, but that would, that would be the follow-up, would be, we're taking a survey as to why people opted out this year or refused, is really the appropriate term, because there's no such thing as opting out in terms of the state education department, but we could ask and see what they tell us.
That just could be helpful going forward to, you know, maybe...
Yeah, I don't know.
Maybe they're still under the correct assumptions.
Well, also, it would also be interesting, too, because as I think I mentioned at one of our committee meetings, and I say this while I knock on wood, that except the Poughkeepsie City School District, we've had, we've had the second lowest rate of test refusals in our county. So, even though it's beyond 95%, it's not like some other neighboring districts, who I could name, but I won't, who have 35, 40, 45% refusal rates. That's not to say we shouldn't try to find out why the, whatever it is, you know, 17%, 12% are not taking the test. And as was mentioned earlier in Laura's report, and you heard from our, two of our building principals tonight, we have a plan to send something out. I wanted to make sure that whatever we sent out was consistent with the new ESA plan. And as late as, I think, this past Wednesday or Thursday, the information on the State Ed website was about the 2017-18 tests. So, I did send an email to our representative of the State Education Department in Dutchess County, i.e. Dr. Hooly, and said, "Hey, the test isn't in," at the time, it was like less than three weeks, "where's the, where's the updated information?" I don't want to be using outdated information and saying something that's not. And just this morning, as I think Brett mentioned, his office sent me the 2019 toolkit. So, we'll be sending, I anticipate we'll be sending something out if not the end of this week, the very beginning of the following week, just to let parents know what's, what's going on and to encourage them to have their kids participate if they've not in the past. So, we'll be following through.
Great. And then, Kim. Liz?
So, the refusal numbers?
Yes.
Have they, have they been going, do they go up? Have they been going up over the years, or is it just like all up and down?
No, they, they've been gradually increasing. And I mean, things have happened over the last several years from when it was first implemented, that I can only assume some people are changing their, their minds. I mean, I don't want to overblow that, but, you know, they've made some changes to the test. They've cut back the number of days of testing. They've made the tests untimed, and they've done some things, I think, in a, in an effort to respond to parent concerns. Another big issue you may recall was the fact that those assessment results were used as part of the APPR, and the State Education Department said, "There's a moratorium on that." So, that, again, if people let their kids refuse the test because they didn't want their teachers to be rated based on assessment results, then when the state pulled that back, maybe some of those said, "Okay, my kid's teacher's not going to be rated according to how he or she and their classmates do on the test, so maybe I'll let my kid..." Said, I mean, I don't know, but I can only assume that changes may be reflected in the rate gradually. I mean, we never had a god-awful rate to begin with, and it's gotten gradually better, but it's still, it's still far below 95%. So, we're still not where ESA wants us to be, where the federal government wants us to be, where the State Education Department wants us to be, and you can make your own interpretations as to what you think of the states and the federal government's expectations of us, but they are what they are.
Are there any schools that are 95%?
Yeah. Many, I couldn't name them for you.
With R in New York State.
Yeah, many urban schools have a relatively low refusal rate, and I think the reason there is those parents are saying, "We need our kids to take the test to show what kind of help they need, to make sure the maximum amount of dollars flow to our schools." So, they have kind of a vested interest in getting their kids into school and taking those assessments. You know, some more affluent school districts, maybe there's less of a, an interest in that, and, you know, parents who have talked to me over the years about test refusals and "Why should I have my kid take the test? What's the, is there any financial impact on the district if my kid doesn't take the test?" And the answer is, quite frankly, no. They threatened it, you know, they being, the State Education Department has threatened to take State Ed away from school districts, but they never have. Will they? I don't know, but it's kind of been a hollow threat, at least up to this point.
Anything else?
Not on that topic.
All right. Let's roll right into curriculum.
All right, that's me. So...
You can give just the top line, you don't, you don't have to read it.
Yeah, I'm not going to, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I do want to address a couple, I guess, interesting, the interaction with the Policy Committee. So, we spent almost the whole session discussing about serving advanced learners, and one big chunk was spent talking about, "Do we have any current ways of guessing how many gifted or advanced learners we currently have?" And the bottom line is, not really, at this point. There are problems with using any of the measures that we currently have in place because we haven't had a goal of identifying and tracking such students, and so we, we don't. So, I will read one paragraph. "Lacking a set of standards and assessments which can be compared to national norms makes it extremely difficult to reliably and fairly identify and track gifted learners. There would be meaningful hurdles to choosing and administering such assessments, so choosing what, you know, what tests we might want to use. And if we're not identifying and tracking those students, it's hard to make a policy. And if we don't have a policy, it would be problematic to offer special accommodations or interventions without risking violating principles of equity and fairness, openness and accessibility." So, this gets to the interchange we had a little earlier, talking about, "Well, you know, we don't want to make a policy because that sets things in stone, and we should leave it open." But if we leave it open, then it could be administered in a way that isn't consistent with principles of equity and fairness, accessibility and openness. And so, there's a bit of a conflict there. And, yeah, an attention there. So, I'd like that discussion to continue. We also talked about two items, one of which maybe you want to click on the link in the electronic version here, which is the second one, no, the first one. The NAGC is the National Association for Gifted Children, and, and they produced a 2018 report on developing academic acceleration policies based on extensive recent research, best practices. It gets very specific about, like, really giving guidelines of how districts could develop policies if they chose to do so. So, the NAGC report definitely favors various forms of acceleration, and that includes grade skipping, early entrance to kindergarten or college, dual-credit courses such as advanced placement and international baccalaureate programs, and subject-based acceleration. And so, we currently have the AP and unlimited subject-based acceleration in middle school with math and languages. But, but they, the NAGC, recommend various forms of acceleration as cost-effective and academically beneficial, and that even though there is some disagreement, the overall review of, of research out there shows there's no evidence that acceleration has a negative effect on the student's social and emotional development. However, Joe shared that he informally asked other superintendents in Dutchess County about grade skipping in their schools, and none of them had policies. Some of them allow students to skip a grade in elementary school, but it is very rare. And I brought up that I was concerned that our recent change to the age cutoff for kindergarten might influence, it might have an impact on highly gifted students. And so, I just think we should keep that in mind in consideration of our district's reluctance to skip grades. Lisa brought up that perhaps we could work together with Red Hook or Pine Plains to offer some sort of enrichment or a program either within the school day or after school to better address the needs of students who are advanced well beyond the content taught in their regular classroom, which is a really interesting idea. Marvin and Joe expressed strong concerns about the challenges that would be involved in developing an egalitarian, logistically feasible policy consistent with the district values and culture that would provide different opportunities or offerings for our most advanced learners. The number of students potentially impacted, while unknown, is likely very small, and the effort required to develop such a policy would be substantial. So, you know, those are, those are serious hurdles. Marvin noted that the district's whole-child approach, in which every child is appropriately challenged, already includes differentiating instruction across a range of student abilities. And as I mentioned, we already have AP, and students can choose their classes in high school, but he agreed that he would work on finding ways to raise awareness and build the conversation among the elementary school teachers about how we can enrich and extend learning for those students who have already mastered the concepts being covered in the regular curriculum. So, and then, we talked about the expectations of AP classes and grading, and whether those AP grades are being used as final quarter grades, and make sure that that isn't happening in a way that's problematic now that the AP exam is optional. And I asked for an update on the Bard High School Early College Program, which I gather you guys talked about some in the meeting that I missed, but the bottom line is that at this point, for financial and logistic reasons, it's just not within our, our scope of being able to participate this year. And just on a personal note, I didn't put it in the notes, I hope we continue to revisit for next year or the next year, so that it's not necessarily a closed conversation on the matter, but, but I recognize that for this year, we all agreed, it just doesn't, it's not a viable option at this time. not a viable option at this time. So, and our next meeting is April 4th.
I would, I would just share that I had a follow-up email conversation on the topic of the Board, Early College, High School, and I think the irony is that the same thing that's holding us back in terms of the distance and the transportation and the schedule and not being able to share transportation with Red Hook is, I'm not sure if you saw that email from Bruce Martin, I thought you looked into it, but whatever, is the same reason that they are considering not being able to participate because...
They, Red Hook?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. Because both schools would have to shoulder the burden of the entire cost of transportation. You know, I know that that was an issue for us, and we were kind of hoping when we first started having this conversation, that sharing the transportation, if, if the times and everything else could have worked out, would have been one step closer to being able to participate from a financial perspective, but it doesn't seem like that's going to work for us. And the response I got from Bruce is, yeah, we've been talking about it too, and the fact that we can't share with you guys is making us reconsider whether we're able to participate. So, I mean, I can't do anything about their situation, and they're closer than we are, but it's an expense. So, you know, things we were really pushing hard to try to get to happen, at least now, I'm not, I wouldn't close the door forever. I did mention to Michael Sadowski at one point earlier on, I said, well, you know, if you'd cite this program for our college, we'd be a lot closer to being able to get our kids there. And he kind of smiled, I mean, he knew, he knew what I was saying, and I know why they had that program in Hudson, and Hudson is just that much further away for us. So, I mean, we've really, I think we've made a good faith effort to try to explore all the possibilities and see if we could find a way that made it feasible, both time-wise and financially, and at least right now, it's just, you know, if, if Red Hook pushed their start time back a half an hour and we, you know, I mean, that's one thing we did that's now a little different. We start at eight, they start, I don't know, 1:00, 7:30 or whatever. So there's a half an hour that we're, we're out of sync there. They've got to get their buses back in time to roll out of there at 2:15 or whatever, and we're not rolling out until 2:35. So, you know, those, those logistics have been a challenge. So, keep an open mind. It's not like we're opposed to the concept, it's just, we're not able to make it happen unless we, you know, have so much extra money within the tax levy cap, that money is no object, and we all know that it's not, it's not going to be the case anytime soon.
Diane.
Just to bring up the policy part again, I mean, is it the curriculum committee's thought that there should be a policy, or is it still a conversation you're having?
May I respond to that?
Go ahead.
Okay, so, please, anybody who feels like I'm misstating it, jump in. But I think that where we're at in the discussion is that we're trying to come to grips with what we, the committee, would want to see to have a program in place to help identify and provide appropriate education to advanced learners. And when we come to some sort of an accord on that, then we'd be able to take the next step, which is figure out whether having a policy would advance that goal, and if it did, what kind of, what elements you'd need to have in a policy. So we're like at least two steps away from getting the policy committee involved, which I guess is why I asked the question when I saw the policy committee's report, because it wasn't clear to me. I, I thought the policy committee would just wait for the curriculum committee to say, hey, we need a policy, here's what we need in the policy. So anyway, it may be that we'll be making a recommendation about that, but I think that we're a ways away.
Right, because those are two different, I mean, one, you know, are we going to do that testing to see if we have such students? And two, are we then going to do something about it?
Right, exactly.
Two different things, of course, price tags attached to those, open to those things probably, but, yeah, okay. So then, I answered my question.
Does the, identifying the advanced learners play into, I think it was coming out of the long-term planning where they wanted to do a tracking of all the students?
Individual education plans.
Yeah, yeah, individual occasion plan.
Yeah.
Yeah. Different kind of tracking.
Different kind of tracking. But would that play, would that become a part of that?
It's, in theory, it could. Yeah, I mean, to the extent that that's something that we take up and we really move forward with as a district, it would make sense to have that be part of it because advanced learners are going to need plans, just like, you know, normative learners, or whatever the terminology would be.
And I didn't click on the links, but I will, but in your research, I mean, do a lot of these kids, are they identified simply through their teachers? I mean, it seems like that's a logical place where a teacher would say, this is probably someone that maybe should do a test, or whatever, that I feel is advanced learner.
So, not just, so, so the best practices are definitely not relying on just teacher recommendations, because those tend to lead towards skewed results that have racial elements and socioeconomic elements and, and problematic rollout. So, so one of the problems is like, well then, how do you pick who you're going to test? Do you test everybody? Well, that's a lot to put a kindergartner through, or, you know, whatever age you choose to do it, it's, and it may not make sense for everybody. Do you test for everybody who has interest, or who is recommended, or who a parent requests, you know, I mean, different kinds of factors. So, so it's, it's a lengthy report, the link, but it really dives into the complexities of that question. But it's definitely not recommending just teacher identification.
If, if I could be so bold, I'd just like to, not, not that I can recall an example of this in my 21 years in this school district, but typically when the policy committee is tasked or asked to develop a policy on X, it is, I think it's assumed that the policy committee supports developing a policy on X. And I'll take it one step further, that the Board as a whole would like that to happen. Okay? So I would just suggest, as we continue to study this, that this may be a topic where, at some point before a policy is developed, the Board kind of weighs in and says, yes, we all think we should at least see what a policy would look like, or the Board, or in majority thereof, says, and I'm not suggesting which way it should be, because I think we're still exploring this idea, but if the majority of the Board said, you know what, we don't support that idea, so don't develop a policy on that because we're not inclined to approve it, then I think it would be a waste of time to develop a policy if, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying this is the impression I have at this point, but I think on a topic like this, we all ought to be saying, yeah, it's at least worth considering, so let's, let's at least develop a policy and see what that looks, because that could be where the rubber meets the road. Yes, I like the idea, but this policy takes it too far, or doesn't take it far enough, or whatever, but if there's no interest in the, or little interest in the development of a policy to begin with, then why spend three or four months out of that committee's time developing such a policy? Again, I'm not prejudging either way, but I think we all ought to be thinking, yeah, it's worth at least spending the time to develop such a policy, or not. That's, that's all. So I want to say more about the process than what this committee thinks or what that committee thinks. If we get to that point, then let's see how it plays out. I think it's worth having the discussion.
Yep.
That's it for me.
All right. I'd like to point out that I think it's one of the first times that we've spread the committee reports out among most of us. It's pretty, pretty good. All right. Community Advisory Committee for Long Range Planning Report.
Okay, if I, if I could speak to this item? At our last meeting, I provided all the Board members the, the output from the Community Advisory Committee for Long Range Planning. We didn't have an extensive discussion of it. What I suggested was that Board members probably ought to take the time in their own space outside of a Board meeting to read through that and to provide some feedback. And I'm not saying that it needs to happen tonight come heck or high water. You've already heard some of the, some of the kind of spillover of some of these ideas in our conversations. I heard some of it Saturday morning at the, at the Board work session, because we shared this with, with our administrators, and I think unless the Board is violently opposed, you may actually see some things happening next, next year that are no-cost items that there seems to, that seems to have resonated with some of the admins. I mean, I'll just point to advisory as one idea out of many that Ed and John are talking pretty seriously about that and are looking for a way to do that, again, without adding extra money, you know, without any budgetary impact. So we'll see where it goes, but I mean, there's, there's interest on some of the topics. And I'm not saying that there won't be interest on more of the topics, depending on how some of those ideas get woven into a long-range plan. I mean, it's, as the, as the LRP knows, you know, we know this is a multi-year thing, we know it's a big job now to take these ideas, marry them with other ideas in terms of the development of a, of a long-range plan, but I think there is much of value in there, and probably not with every single item that was raised, because, as I think I mentioned last time, these ideas were not raised as consensus items. They were raised as ideas, concepts, that the table groups felt like we ought to flow this up to the Board. And ultimately, that's where the buck stops with the Board, okay? And again, I, I think many of you who, who saw an email this past week on the topic of decreasing the tuition for non-resident students, I mean, there's a very interesting idea that I don't think I've fully been able to wrap my head around the benefit of that. I'm not saying there is or isn't, but I'm not, I'm not locking into why reducing our tuition to $2,000 to $5,000 per student, when it's costing us about $19,000 a student, is a benefit to our school district. I just, nobody's explained that to me, I can't figure that out, and maybe somebody else will. I thought perhaps somebody who was in the audience tonight, you know, might have been able to do that, but, so, I mean, there are concepts in there that I think really need a lot of thought. I think there are concepts in there that would probably need some significant budget support to, you know, there's, it's kind of all over the map, but I think good ideas worth thinking about and considering. So at some point, we need to mulle these ideas over and either say, yeah, that's a great idea, let's talk about that some more, or I don't really see how this, this fits, let's either get some more information, or let's focus on things that we think have more, more near-term possibility. I mean, I, I don't know, there's, there's a lot there, but I just, I wanted to bring it back up again, maybe tonight, this time is not the time to be having a full-throated conversation about it. And maybe there's, maybe that's fodder for some more granular discussion amongst the members of the LRP to come back and say, this is what we're thinking about, some of these things. I don't know, I don't want to dump a big job on their plate either, but I think there needs to be some conversation at some point, not too far down the line. That's, that's it.
Lisa.
So I agree with you that right now is not a good time to have a thoughtful conversation, because I'm not sure I'm capable of that at this hour. What I would suggest, though, is that we put it on as a discussion item for early in the agenda of an upcoming meeting, and so we all know the meeting before it's going to be on, and that we'd be prepared to discuss it like it's the first or second item that evening. And that way, we will be, you know, we'll be ready to share.
Well, you know, hope springs eternal, and, and most, most months, I look forward to the agenda that's a pretty light agenda, and there have been a few, where we've walked out of here at 8:15, feeling like we, we had the world by the tail, and a lot of times, we've got a pretty jammed agenda, so.
Right, I know.
I, I don't disagree with you. It's not the kind of thing to shuttle into an already jam-packed agenda, and sometimes you don't know how jam-packed it's going to be.
It's true.
Actually plays out in the real.
But I mean, for example, next time, we already know we're going to have a presentation from the STEM Club, and that's probably not the night that we want to have that discussion.
Okay.
Far.
Yes.
I can't believe I'm suggesting this, but might this be a big enough topic to stand on its own, like for a Saturday?
Like a workshop.
Workshop, where people could come, knowing that this is what we're, that we're just going to discuss it, but, but people could come? Is that crazy?
It's not crazy, and we've actually talked about that in the committee. You know, because there's a lot to unpack here.
Yeah, it's, it's really a lot, and, and...
And you guys don't have the benefit of the three or four meetings that we had, or, you know, the LRP discussions, sideline discussions about it, so it is not crazy. I'd be in favor of that. Draw poll. Anybody have objection to doing that? No? Okay.
That's great.
Well, maybe when we meet again, we can look at some possible dates and talk about a, a format or a...
Yeah.
Whatever. I wouldn't reject that out of hand, but I also know how difficult it is to gather the eight of us around a table anytime. So we'll have to work something out.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Time to move on to good news. Anyone?
We have a set, a group of people who are going to, you know, build sets.
I think that's really great news.
Yes.
Excellent news. It's a nail-biter there for a little bit. How about old business? Anyone have any old business?
Oh, we're done with good news, right?
I don't know.
Done so quickly.
Slow the train down, Joe.
Well, I just, I just, I just wanted to share, I just wanted to share that I had the pleasure of, I actually had the pleasure of attending two, I guess I call it professional development, opportunities over the last couple of days. I haven't been in the district all that much the last two days, but I did spend a morning down in Putnam, Northwestern, Westchester Bowses Friday morning. down at Putnam Northwestern, Westchester BOCES Friday morning going through a, like a preliminary training on a program that has an acronym as the name, as a name. It's called Ruler. It's a social and emotional learning program out of Yale University. Some of you may have heard of it, I'm not sure. Actually, Emily and Ed Davenport had attended an awareness session a couple of months ago and said to me, we're pretty excited about this. We think you need to go because this is going to require some superintendent-level support and it's not like a one-and-done type of thing. So I did go and I was very impressed and we actually had a conversation, if you know when it was, must have been an afternoon. Yeah, our administrative council meeting about how we might be able to get involved. We talked about budget, potential budget impact and grant money that Marvin has that we could use specifically for that kind of thing. So, I mean, we'll give you more information as we kind of roll out, but that was, it's not often I go to meetings like this and come back like, wow, this is really great stuff, why aren't we doing this? Let's go. So that was good. I also today got the opportunity to take the training on, I forget the name of it actually, I totally blotted it out, sustainable comparability. Yes, well, as a result of situations in some of the New York City schools, every school district in the state is required to conduct a review of the private schools within its geographical borders to make a determination as to whether or not that school district is offering a comparable educational program to its students. And you can imagine how that might be fraught with all sorts of.
Mines.
All sorts of land mines.
I'm not sure we're in good news anymore.
What's that?
I'm not sure we're in good news anymore.
Well, maybe not, but the good news is that I found out about it in a very granular way. And the other good news is that BOCES is giving some thought to offering that as a co-sir.
Oh, that is good news.
Well, maybe good news depending on what it might cost us. And the other good news is that we only have two of those schools within our boundaries as opposed to some other schools that have dozens more. So I just, to let you know, that's coming down the pike. And as the Board of Education, you would have to approve my or my designees' assessment of whether that school is offering a comparable program. So just to let you know what's out there and what's coming down the pike and what every school district in the state will be dealing with.
Interesting.
That's all the good news I have.
Just to follow a question on that.
Sure.
If you determine they're not giving comparable education, whose job is it to fix that?
Well, it is the superintendent's or his or her designees' job to then work with that school to plan to have them become comparable.
Wow. Because that's.
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 Yes. So now you know why I wanted to bring it to your attention.
Yeah. Thank goodness we only have two schools.
And they're looking better and better.
Yeah. I think they're fine.
They may be.
Done.
So I have.
Well, that was pretty good.
Well, you ought to know because you hear about it from somebody else, you want to know why I didn't tell you about it. It's a big deal and it's just rolling out now.
And this is from who? Who's asking for this?
The State Education Department.
State Education Department.
Yeah, based on some issues that they had been having over the last few years in New York City with private schools. And I wouldn't want to go into the particulars of that on camera necessarily. The State Education Department has seen fit to say, well, if we're going to do this in New York, we have to do it all across the state so we're not discriminating against any particular type of school. So we're all in the game now. That's it. Want to know more? I'd be glad to tell you more over an adult bathroom sometime. That would be great. Gabby, somebody call.
Okay. Wow. Any other good news? Or questionable news?
Let's just say news.
Okay. Old business?
So I have something, which I'm not sure is really old business, but I forgot about it when we were talking about the budget, so I'm going to call it old business. So I have to say that I was really, really impressed with Emily Davison's impassioned advocacy on behalf of Naviance. I was kind of unpersuaded up until that point, you know? I heard some interesting things about it, but didn't sound like it was that much better than what we were already doing. But Emily was very persuasive and particularly for her population of students. I was really, I was really taken with how useful that would be to help them. And so I'd like to ask whether the next iteration of the budget could include the cost of Naviance in it. So we can take a look at it and see what that does.
Well, one of the things that we're doing right now is to get a real, real number on that program. Because that, as much as there was a number there.
The $8,000 was the number we recorded.
It was a fuzzy number. It was. And when it was forwarded to me from Ed, it was really 9,000. And then when I looked into it, I realized it wasn't through BOCES. This is directly with.
Software company.
The software company. So that was an estimate from the software company. So I called up our, I first started across the river at our Mid-Hudson wreck and they said, we don't support that anymore. Check out Duchess. So we got ahold of Duchess and Duchess does support. So at this time, we're gathering some information to give to them so they can come back with quotes for us. There's two ways in which this program can be done, and that is get the whole thing or you can pick up modules.
A la carte.
A la carte. So the question is, I mean, I looked at these a la carte items, I don't even know what half of them even were. So we're doing a demo on the 25th of this month with Naviance.
We are.
Yes. I don't think, it came out sometime today.
Okay.
Whitney's told you.
Did you tell me?
Yes, because I told her I was booting the H&amp;W out of there.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, I got it. Oh, you're booting my group out? Yes. You guys are out of there.
Moving it over.
Yes. Okay, now I do remember. Thank you.
Anyway.
Yes. So we're gathering up the information so we can put together, you know, what the true, true cost is. Now, here's the other question. We've yet to get below the tax cap yet to add something back in.
Understood.
So, but what we can do, at least we could start at least looking at items to consider in prioritizing which ones we would consider if money became available.
Okay.
Or to the point too is if you feel as though this program is, hey, we need it, you tell us, we put it in the budget and we'll need to find out the money to take out of the budget. If you feel as though it's that, that important, well, I would like to learn more about it and, you know, I just have a very non-granular sense of what it does. And I think we'll be doing that next week. So we'll let you know what we think.
That's fine.
The other thing, just if I can kind of riff on your comment, one of the things on our list of possibilities, what's the special ed athletic program that we had on? Oh, United, unified. Unified sports. Yeah, we are taking that off that list. We talked to Emily. Emily said she doesn't feel that there are any students. I mean, some of the special ed students we have are actually participating in interscholastic sports and she didn't think that we had any kids, much less enough kids, to participate. So we're just, for right now, I mean, it's not like we'd never do it, but for right now, there doesn't seem to be a need, so there's no reason to try to budget a program for which there was a need. So that's coming off our list right now. And another clarification to Naviance, it does not go completely down into the elementary school yet. There are plans for it, but right now it's really a 6-12 program with a module or two that were said that they're pushing down to the elementary, but really, we don't know anything about which ones are. They expect to go K-12 by 2021. 2021, right. But right now, they're not. So we'll find out some more.
Could be helpful to get more information because I was going to bring this up there.
Sure.
Other, I tried to online and there's really, without signing up, there's no information. So I look forward to your report.
Yeah, we'll let you know what we find out.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes.
And that is that this is really old business, but it's connected with what we're talking about. For me, I find it very useful, especially when we're talking about items that our administrators favor being part of our program. I really find it useful to hear them advocating in favor of those things, you know? I recognize that our administrators don't want to pressure us. They don't want us to feel like, you know, we have to do something because they said that they're in favor of it. However, because most of us aren't professional educators and our knowledge is relatively limited compared to theirs, which is much more extensive, I personally find it very useful when they talk to us about why something is worthwhile. And I like them to be encouraged to do more of that.
Totally agree. And, you know, I think the discussions this year have been around, if there are things that you feel strongly about, then let's talk about what offsets we can find. So, you know, if this is the kind of thing that would really support student learning and guidance planning, I think, you know.
And since it did affect a lot of Emily's kids, it's quite possible they could have a grant through one of the federal grants to help support to, is a possibility.
Good point.
Couldn't support the whole thing, but they're portion.
At least a portion would be there. Yeah. It would be nice to have a program that supports absolutely every kid in the district.
Wouldn't it? Yes. Just may do, I don't know what to say.
Okay. Other old business? We have no public other. I have a couple of others. Based on our FYIs, I just wanted to point out for anybody who may be watching at home that the prospective board member workshop is March 23rd at Duchess BOCES. For anybody who's interested in running for the seats that are available, I found it an incredibly valuable exercise morning. So you get to talk to the superintendent and other board members from different districts and what their experience has been. So it's very useful. My other other is regarding the email I sent you guys about CDEP and being able to participate. I think there's only going to be one more meeting this year, but maybe two.
I think maybe two. I mean, Ed Duett had to miss the last.
Yeah, I did.
Meaning I think there are going to be others still.
Maybe two.
Yeah, I guess so.
You know, I highly recommend this committee. And it's only a couple of times a year.
Yeah, it's not often, to be fair.
It is not often. It is not often. But it is, it has been for the last three years, my most favorite feel-good meeting. So highly recommend it. And we do need to have board representation. So anybody who'd like to volunteer, that would be wonderful. Please let me and Joe and Marvin know. All right. We all need to sit on our hands. Okay.
Get in our shoes.
Exactly. All right. Are we ready to move on to action?
Yes.
Okay. Would anybody like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Steve?
Just a question on 7.1.2. Do we didn't have that presentation? Do we want to take that renaming off to?
Yes. Or not? Do we not?
I don't think you need to. It's existing. It's up to you. I don't have a problem leaving it on.
The presentation wasn't about changing the name.
No.
It's just what we're doing.
Correct. Correct. And you can at any time decide, we're going to get rid of it, we're not going to, you know? I don't pay a bit before the presentation. But that, good question.
Okay. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda? Any discussion? All those in favor? I would just like to thank, as we seem to every meeting, Rhinebeck Science Foundation and the PTSO for their generous support. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Lucy Munger to provide teacher aid services for one to two hours per day for each day of modified track season, practices, and contests as necessary and appropriate for the spring 2019 interscholastic athletic season effective March 11th, 2019, in accordance with the 2018-19 ante-salary schedule. Kathleen Smith, Chris Martin, and/or Kimberly Apenour will provide substitute coverage as needed. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous? That motion passes? Okay, so Tom, we're going to read this long.
I think you probably should.
Yeah, I think we have to, right? Okay. May I have?
I think you can do it all in one block, so.
I think you can do it all in one moment.
Read all one. Okay, good.
Grab what I gave you mine.
All right. May I have a motion upon the?
This is what you gave out.
Yes.
You already have it, that's fine. I know somebody had left it in their block. Somebody may not have theirs. Do you have that?
No, I left it.
If you don't, you can. I don't need it. You can take mine. I got an extra one.
Okay.
I can print it out again.
You ready? Okay. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education reject contract number one site work, construction work due to bid amount being greater than budgeted? Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education authorizes the rebid of contract number one site work, construction? Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education award contract number two general construction work to the following vendor, Key Construction Services LLC, $2,430,000. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education reject contract number three roofing construction work due to bid amount being greater than budgeted? Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education authorizes the rebid of contract number three roofing construction work? Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education award contract number four window curtain wall construction work to the following vendor, Zero Draft of CNY Inc., $1,775,500. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education award contract number five plumbing construction work to the following vendor, Duchess Mechanical Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education award contract number six HVAC construction work to the following vendor, S&amp;O Construction Services Inc., $290,120. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education award contract number seven electrical construction work to the following vendor, Hudson Valley Electrical Construction and Maintenance Inc., $1,633,333. Less alternate number 18 middle school, high school lighting replacement, negative Less alternate number 19 elementary school lighting replacement, less $315,715,000 for a total of $597,919. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education award contract number eight hazardous material work to the following vendor, Actor Corporation, $486,500. Less alternate number 20 chemical floor tile mastic removal, less $150,000 for a total of $336,500. Total recommended contracts, $5678,139.
Yeah. Some of?
Second. Any discussion? Just that one.
Is there a typo under the rebid of contract number one site work, work construction?
Yeah, there's an.
Yeah, there's an extra work in there.
Okay. Also site work.
Why would you?
I thought I was stuttering.
That was me.
All right.
It was site work, construction work.
Yeah. All right. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations? All those in favor? That's unanimous?
Oh, okay, yeah.